Call this meeting the Reno City Council Order at 6:00 PM, November 10th, 2014. Allow the invocation by Mayor Pro Tem Jordan.
Shall we pray? Our Father and our God, we are thankful for the blessings of life which is ours tonight, and we thank you, Lord, for the confidence and the hope that we have in you. We pray, Lord, that you take control of this meeting tonight, that you'd lead and guide, help us to do those things that are pleasing in your sight, and that are beneficial to our community and to our fellow citizens. We pray, Lord, you forgive us of our sins wherein we failed you, and bless our lives to your service, for we ask it in Jesus' name and for his sake. Amen.
I'd like to invite everyone to stand if you're able to jointly the pledge of the United States and the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Roll call.
Joan Corthee.
Here.
Brandon Thomas.
Here.
Rick Jordan.
Here.
Amanda Willows.
Here.
Walter Cooper.
Here.
Let the record show, all members present, also present Mayor William Newberger, City Attorney David Hamilton, and City Secretary Kara Hubbard taping the minutes.
Item six, citizen comments. Chief Drakes, no one signed in, alright, we'll skip that item. Item seven, discuss take action on checking account for Texas Community Development Block Grant, TXCDB.
That's a requirement for the Texas Community Development Block Grant to add a non-interest-bearing checking account specifically set up to deposit the funds into. I've talked to everybody involved, we have an account already set up that's not being used, that was, just to use for the same purpose, and I just need council action in order to change the name on that account.
Mayor, I make motion that we approve the checking account for Texas Community Development Block Grant, TXCDB.
I second that.
Have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Jordan, and second by Mr. Thomas, that we approve checking account for Texas Community Development Block Grant. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, asphalt repair bids for Pine Mill Road and Old Clarksville Road as recommended by the Street Commission. Mr. Revis.
Mayor, Council. These two spots, asphalt, were these two areas that we had a lot of problems with, plates, we needed to go ahead and get done before winter, winter coming in, so.
We only had the one bid on the asphalt repair, correct?
Uh, we had two bids.
Oh, J and L, we've got two, I'm sorry, I see, man. Approximately $64,000 versus $43,000.
These two areas also, they're in priority one, so we didn't have to, we didn't chance to make anything special happen there, it's already in there, fell under that section. These are the two worst spots that we have, as far as, probably the one right now, need to be done before winter.
I'm seeing a lot of paper shuffling looking, and for clarification, on Richard Drake's bid, which is the second, or the third page, I guess, to the back. We've got Richard Drake Construction, the logo at the top of it. Old Clarksville Road and Pine Mill Road are the two asphalt portions. One $27,711, one $15,500. On J and L paving, on this next sheet, the top two are the asphalt, one $19,595, another $44,000. Correct?
Correct.
If I, my math's correct, Drake's total bid for asphalt's $43,211, J and L's bid is $63,595.
Correct.
So, what's the pleasure of the council?
What about Brashir's, we, well, he's, okay, he's not doing one by now, in Old Clarksville, Brashir's?
Yeah, he's done the concrete.
Street Commission recommended Richard Drake.
Alright, Mayor, I move that we hire Richard Drake Construction Company to do the asphalt repair for Pine Mill Road and Old Clarksville Road in the amount of $43,211.
Have a motion by Mr. Thomas, and second by Mr. McCarthy, that we award asphalt repair bids for Pine Mill Road and Old Clarksville Road to Richard Drake Construction, in the amount of $43,211. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, concrete repair bids for Pine Valley, Turtle Creek, and Wellington Point, as recommended by the Street Commission.
These are concrete areas, we had a couple that we've been getting a lot of complaints on, so I just kinda went out and looked at the worst spots we had as far as concrete goes. And these, there's areas in each one, that look pretty bad, that we need to get done pretty quick. Different sections, getting processed on the actual repairs.
Do you have a total of these two bids added up, or the three on the concrete repairs?
What, what Street Commission looked at was the overall bid. Was Drake, Richard Drake's overall bid was $77,565.
Is that just concrete only, or?
Everything told you.
How much was it?
Well, $34,000 just for concrete.
With the asphalt, concrete, it was $77,565. J and L was $90,445. The Shears bid, we didn't open these till now to the Street Commission. His bid was actually, I believe it was the low bid, but he didn't bid, he didn't bid everything properly. We looked at it, he was given information to bid on, and he didn't bid. The main, the main difference is in his bid was, the concrete was a $3,000 PSI concrete, so a $4,000 PSI concrete. He had, his rebar was on 12 inch centers, instead of 14, or 16 inch centers, makes a big difference. I brought that to your attention also.
What did they say about it?
We didn't look at the other bids, the way that bid wouldn't be what we wanted to put out.
Well, there's a difference between these two bids. One's using $3,000 PSI concrete, the other is $4,000. One's got.
Yeah, they didn't do this, he didn't bid it the way they wanted it, so they didn't consider this one.
So, the Street Commission basically didn't make a recommendation on the concrete, did they?
Yeah, maybe they did.
Yes, they did.
They did?
Yes.
Right, didn't it?
Yes. Directly awarding bid to Richard Drake Construction for concrete repairs on Pine Valley, Turtle Creek, and Wellington Point.
Has anyone added up Drake's just concrete only bid?
Yeah, if I'm looking at it.
Thirty-four thousand.
Yeah, it's $34,000, but.
Thirty-four, three fifty-four.
Right. And if I'm looking at J and L right, it's $26,850. Is that right?
I think so.
That's why I was wondering, why would they, I'm wondering why they went with Richard Drake, if it was that drastic of a difference.
Well, I think it's, what they looked at was the overall bid. We should have bid it out as overall. I mean, do that.
Okay, by looking at these bids, are these something that we can separate?
Were these people told, they give us a bid on street repairs, or were they told, bid whatever parts of it you want to, we're gonna pick and choose?
Uh, no, I asked them to bid the streets and the concrete repairs, bid all of that, J and L and Drake. The Shears, only thing he could bid was the concrete. We didn't have him outside, took concrete, anything bid asphalt.
So, did the bid go out as two separate bids, or just for one total?
It just went out as street bids, so that would cover, I guess, cover everything. Go out as two separate.
Oh, okay, so that's the question I was wanting, I mean, can we, could we award two separate? No, where's Drake?
That's what I, they, from me looking at it, J and L was a little bit on concrete.
Right, yeah.
Jake Drake was a little bit on asphalt.
Right.
If you look at the overall bid, it's different. I guess it's just, I guess that's the way they looked at it.
That's a big difference, hence.
Yeah.
True. Each one of them's separate bids, though, the way you got it written down.
Yeah, I guess you're right.
Way to bid it out, every piece, do different calls on each section.
That's right.
I mean, that's, that's the way I would look at it, if we bid this, we're gonna get this section done, or this section done, we could do whatever.
Sure.
Well, I come up with $26 something, J and L on concrete.
Twenty-six, what?
Uh, twenty-six.
But you know, looking at this from a contractor's perspective, I would say that these are, the total down there is a total price, they just broke the bid item down because we asked for it to be broke down, I guess, I don't know. Granted, there's a total difference between concrete work and asphalt work, and very little of the equipment's gonna be used for one or the other, but some of it does. But the way it's worded on the agenda, we've got two separate items, we've got two separate bids. You know, I would suggest that, you know, unless Street Commission's got a good reason or want to go with the higher bid, would need to go with the low bidder.
Which would be $21,000, not a difference, actually.
Right, when it's that, that large, but different.
Did J and L bid your specs?
Yes, yes, everything J and L bid for spec.
Well, see, we're assuming they did, they didn't qualify the type of concrete, the steel in their bid like the other two bids. Did we tell them what type of concrete we wanted, the thickness and the rebar?
Rebar, all three were told the same. There's, there's would be that bid, I mean, it would be spec bid, wouldn't accept that either. Make them ask workforce, and they know what specs are.
Does, does J and L have any Turtle Creek in it?
Yeah, some of that.
But you know, there's even some difference in the concrete bids from J and L and Drake. Wellington Point Corner, Brittany and Brooks Way. Drake's three by 28 by six. Well, Demo, three by 28. On Brittany, J and L is five by 30 and 26 by three.
Drake's a little bit on concrete, too.
About 30, twice.
Unless I'm adding wrong, Drake's the low bid on concrete as well, unless I added it up wrong.
I think, I think his concrete comes out 34, 354.
Last one out, 354, another one 26, 850.
Oh, I know, I know, I know.
Yeah, why, why are the sizes different? Three. Like, if you look at Brittany Drive compared to other than.
You don't mind suggesting that you're the low bidder? If either contractor says, no, I, or you know, if they say they bid the whole thing, they're not gonna do just part of it, we back up and regroup.
I concur.
But I can't justify spending another eight, $10,000 of money if we don't have to.
Seventy-five hundred.
I'd like to see these on a spreadsheet, side by side, from now on.
We will next time.
Thank you.
What's the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion, we award the concrete work as presented by J and L paving for Brittany Drive, Spruce Drive, I'm sorry, let me rephrase it, for Brittany Drive in the amount of 34, $3,420, Spruce Drive in the amount of $7,590, for I guess to remove and replace the curb, approximately 60 linear feet, $1,800. Lower Lane in the amount of $31,50, and Sandy Lane, $10,890, for a total of $26,850 for the concrete project to J and L paving.
Alright, what was that total again, 26?
$26,850.
I'll second.
You get the total? Twenty-six, 850. Alright, I have a motion by Mr. McCarthy, and second by Mrs. Willows, that we award concrete repair bids for Pine Valley, Turtle Creek, and Wellington Point to J and L paving in the amount of $26,850. Any further discussion?
Those, that's, that's four locations for J and L, and Drake's got five locations for concrete bids.
I think one of his locations was.
Two on Spruce.
Right, was two of them together, if you look at the, the Wellington Point, I think, or Pine Valley, I mean.
One is the end of Spruce, and the other one is Spruce and Pine Valley intersection. That's what I got out of the wall. It's kinda hard to see.
Alright, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Purchase many excavator for Public Works Department.
Yes, we've talked about for several, several years now, first, we put more money in the budget this year, go out and buy one. Not sure the exact amount that we actually put in there, but look to make payments.
Question I was gonna ask you was, why is that, that one Kubota so much cheaper?
I don't know.
Yeah, I was wondering.
I mean, is it a lot smaller one, or?
Exact same size, actually, side by side bids there from Parrish Farm and Ranch.
Yeah.
And the Kubota byboard.
Huge difference.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, actually, for some reason Kubota here in Parrish Farm and Ranch here has given us a 17% government discount, where byboard's only 11.
Wow.
Is this Kubota Parrish Farm and Ranch, Jerry, is it the latest model? This year's model? How much do we budget for that?
$10,000. Cause it was to set up payments, I mean, it didn't do, it wasn't to all pay in this year, that was to, like, down payment to get started.
Which one do you want?
Which one do you want? Uh, Kubota.
There's one, two, three, four.
Which Kubota do you want?
Parrish Farm and Ranch, TX71, three S, four R1.
R1, okay, I don't know if you want the R1 or the R2.
We discussed that.
Let me interrupt you a second.
Yeah, what's the difference?
Let me ask you a question from counselor. This agenda item says purchase many excavator for Public Works Department. We don't have a proposal on how we're gonna pay for this. We've got $5,000.
Ten.
$10,000 in the budget that was adopted to go towards many excavator. Can we buy this tonight, come back next meeting for how we're gonna pay for it, or if we need the whole plan before we do anything?
If, if they've got a deal worked out to do it, you can say, hey, we'll buy it, and we'll pay you $10,000 now, and we'll pay out the rest of it next year and put it in budget. If they say, no, we're not gonna do that, then you haven't bought it.
Basically, we're just gonna be looking for finance, the financing options off, we'll be able to pay it that way.
My, I mean, what, my recommendation would be get all that done, and I like to see it, then we can.
I mean, we want approval from the council to go ahead with it, before we went ahead.
It's budgeted money, isn't it?
It's budgeted money, but you can't spend budgeted money without council approval.
I thought that's why we put $10,000 on it.
You still can't, we can't spend it without council approval.
Okay, so we can't do anything with this tonight, too?
If you go ahead and say, go ahead and get the financing and come back, then we'll do that, if that's what you wanna do, if you wanna buy it.
We're skirting the agenda when we do that, are we?
Uh, look, you know, it depends on how you define purchase, if this is gonna be, hey, do we have $30,000 in the budget, what I'm hearing people say is no, that we don't have it, and so that might be the end of it. If you define purchase as, well, we've got this installment thing worked out, and we're gonna pay them all, then, yeah, if you've got $10,000 set in the budget, you could spend $10,000 on it tonight, if you wanted to, understanding that purchase means you're gonna have to budget for it again next year, and the year after that, until you pay them. So, it depends on how you, how you define purchase, and your definition is probably as good as mine.
We've been talking many excavator for, kind of inform it, for several years, another month, it's not gonna make or break us. So, I'd like to make sure we do it right in the council, you know, if we start buying stuff and going out financing after we buy it, we're probably gonna create chaos for somebody in the future.
So, is, am I understanding, you gotta have our permission to go out and even start looking at that kinda stuff?
No, we looked at it.
You know, staff's got the right to go out and look and make a proposal, they just don't have the authority to make a purchase.
But we hadn't even got to the, so.
How about together, finance information?
Well, you know, we need some finance information on how we're gonna finance it.
Right, and I think if we have that, you know.
Get ready to let it move.
That's where I'm getting confused, can he go ahead, working on the financing part without us approving it?
Well, apparently yes.
Listen, when I start to finance my car, I hadn't spent a dime on it yet, okay? I say, here, here's how I'm gonna finance that, and there's not any money changing hands at that point.
And I guess we were at the point, if you go out and talk to four or five different places and get financing, and you come in and the council says, no, we don't wanna buy it.
Well, correct me if I'm thinking something different, did we discuss financing this at Lamar Bank in the staff meeting?
We discussed, talked about it.
We did.
Yeah, what difference?
Are y'all, okay, what, what do you need from us here?
Listen, I guess I need approval that either you go out to finance and purchase, or. Listen, I guess I need approval to either go out and finance and purchase, or-
I don't think, yes. I say yes, I don't think, I didn't know you needed our approval to get out and look.
I don't think we need council action for staff to go out and look at and bring a proposal back.
Somebody should've known this.
I mean, if we start doing that, we're gonna hamstring operations to the nth degree.
I think the, the issue that I hear is, do you want him to go out and say, look, we really can't borrow this money at a bank, or to say, look, the, the seller will carry the note, but we have to budget it for so many years. That's what I'm hearing, and if I'm wrong, I'll just be quiet.
Well, we just put the ten thousand dollars, put it there to make the payments, and we seem hurt. I don't need to, it's one of them, gotta get, get the bids out, now just gotta get financed, so we just need a little bit of that.
So we'll bring back next month financing options.
Yeah, I'd get one from like the bank, and then, and then see if, you know, Parish Farm and Ranch would carry, well, you can finance it, or however they might do it.
Kubota.
Kubota, Kubota themselves.
I wonder, this seventeen percent government discount, is that anything that's gonna expire in the next thirty days?
They didn't have any terms on it, they did it out, so, as he said, actually, it probably take a few weeks to get the machine to sell.
But you know, they're typing it straight, they're fighting tail, public works director, city secretary, you know, these prices are thick and expire in the next week, ten days, two weeks, we can call a special meeting and do it.
Right.
What's the difference between R one and R two?
Uh, the R two, that's what we were gonna discuss, we hadn't quite decided yet where we, one has a cab and one doesn't have a cab. That's the difference. Actually, the cab is the one we were looking at, the R two. I didn't have both of them, I'm gonna be Parish Farm and Ranch.
From what I'm hearing, I think we need a motion to postpone this until probably the next council meeting instead of the next regular.
I agree.
Mayor, I make a motion that we table the purchase of, of the, uh, mini excavator Kubota, that we talked about tonight, until the next council meeting pending financing options.
I second the motion.
The motion by Mayor Pro Tim Jordan, the second by Mr. Thomas, that we postpone purchase of mini excavator, contingent upon finance option being presented till the next council meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion, motion carries. Item A, City Council Rules of Order and Procedure. Anyone have any questions, comments, concerns?
I looked over it, nah, didn't have a problem.
I didn't have a chance to look at it, does it cover when the agenda items need to be in there? Or page it on?
Yeah, I thought it did. You know, to answer your question, I think the proper answer is gonna be no, it doesn't. But if I'm not badly mistaken, there was a resolution, or policy, a separate policy passed that addressed that.
Yeah, there's something that has to be, that probably needs to be put in here.
You know, that probably needs to be part of the rules of procedure. So we probably need to postpone this, and we find that, and get it in here and work that out.
So as it stands now, if it, if it's not in by when?
Noon on Wednesday.
Nothing gets in?
I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that things have not been put in there that come in late, they have. Most of the time, they're not.
So it's, it's a pick and choose what gets in after the deadline?
Sir?
It's pick and choose what gets in after the deadline?
You know, there's not been any rhyme or reason to it.
So who makes the final decision if something comes in late, if it gets in there now? Cause I submitted something, I think Thursday.
The city attorney.
Okay.
Now, there has, for, for me, there has been a rhyme or reason to it, in part of that extent. From Wednesday noon until Friday, which will be the last time you can do it, by four o'clock, if there's an item submitted that requires my attention, and it's three o'clock on Friday, there's just not much time left to do anything on it. So I have kinda pushed back on that, unless, and the question I always ask, is there an emergency or some urgent circumstance attached to that request? And if there is, then it gets, from my perspective, it gets that kinda consideration, but if it doesn't appear that way in its face, I say, we've, we've already got people making copies and running things off Thursday to do things. So that's, there is a, from my point of view, there is a rationale to how that stuff-
So, okay.
Mr. Hamilton?
What?
Does this item just stay hanging without a motion, or would it be a motion to keep it alive until the next regular meeting?
Well, if, if there's a, if there's an interest in, in that particular resolution, if it is being added to this, then it needs to be tabled, and, and there needs to be instructions to find that and add it.
There is interest because we're required by this current policy to review it at a minimum every two years. And that time is here, already passed, one figure review. So I would say that item stays live and on the agenda even without a formal motion. Do you agree?
If, if there is someone saying this needs to be corrected, I need, I'd like to see that in there, then you can't approve what you got until you know it's in your hand. And I would say, yeah, there's, you can't do anything tonight if, if there's a need to say, I wanna see our, our own council agenda cut off date stuck in this thing, or at least I wanna read it to see what it is. Then you can't do anything about that, because you just wind up, uh, coming back next month and saying, okay, we've got something we need to stick in the rules of order for the council. So it's not, I think it's, it's not possible to act on it, just needs to be passed or died for lack of a second, or left alone, or instructions of the staff, something. But if you don't wanna approve it now, then come back and you say, oh, by the way, we gotta add something to it here in a month. I don't think.
Alright, everyone in agreement, or someone might make a formal motion on that item? Alright, hearing none, we'll move on to the next item. Did I interrupt something?
Oh, my-
Item eight, new business consent item, discuss take action. A, approval of monthly bills and purchase orders for October two thousand fourteen. Financial update is October thirty-first, two thousand fourteen. Approval minutes of the two thousand fourteen city council meetings. Where are they going? Minutes. On the minutes, there are, there's a typo on the city council meetings, so October thirteenth, two thousand fourteen. Financial updates as of September thirty-first, two thousand fourteen, that needs to be changed to the thirtieth, and adjourned, there was time was left off of the minutes that were in the package. So when we make the motion, we'll need to incorporate approving those two modifications to the October two thousand fourteen city council meeting. Monthly activity reports for October two thousand fourteen from number one, police department, number two, public works department, number three, Reno Volunteer Fire Department. With that said, does Chief Birch, Chief Graves, Public Works Director, Mr. Revis wish to make any comments about their respective activity reports? Alright, hearing none, I will entertain a motion from the council.
One more thing on the minutes, that, that's not in there. And that was on the, I guess on D, on the smoking policy for the city employees. That's in there, but the smoking policy for, I guess, the public, and then the parks and everything, is not in there.
That is-
He's looking good.
For ordinance, twenty fourteen dash ten dash thirteen is for the city.
It says council member Cooper moved with a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Jordan to approve that no smoking policy for city employees.
Oh yeah, that's wrong.
Do we need to research the minutes and make sure the motion was both before we approve these minutes?
Yep.
Alright, anyone else have any questions, comments, concerns over consent items? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Or do we want the no action and bring this whole consent item back at the next meeting?
Well, if it's wrong, it's wrong.
Yeah, but we can approve all the items except for the council minutes if you also choose.
Well, I make the motion to approve items A, B, D, one, two, three, under new business.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. McCarthy, with a second by Mayor Pro Tim Jordan, that we approve consent items A, B, D, one, two, three. That we have removed item C, approval of minutes for October two thousand fourteen city council meetings, from the consent item. That item be held over the next regular council meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, back up item seven, F, litigation, litigation contract and extension contract of November eleventh, two thousand three with Lamar County Water Supply. That item needs to be heard in executive session due to pending litigation. Unless I hear objection from a member of the council, we will do such. Alright, hearing none, let the record show, the city council is gonna adjourn the executive session at six forty-seven PM to discuss litigation contract, extension contract, November eleventh, two thousand three, with Lamar County Water Supply. And according to local government code, section five-five, one point oh seven one, consultation with attorney. Let the record reflect, the city council reconvened an open session at seven eleven PM. Item seven, discuss take action on, item F, litigation contract and extension contract of November eleventh, two thousand three with Lamar County Water Supply. Alright, anyone have any comments, say Mr. Mike?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we instruct the city attorney to discontinue, uh, mediation concerning Lamar County Water Supply issue.
I second.
Have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Jordan, with a second by Mr. Cooper, that we instruct city attorney David Hamilton to terminate mediation with Lamar County Water Supply, the contract litigation issues. Any further comments, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, evaluations of city secretary, chief of police, and city attorney. Means that involves personnel issues, and needs to be heard in the executive session. Unless I hear objection from a member of the council. Alright, hearing none, let the record reflect, the city council is gonna adjourn at seven twelve PM at executive session. Under section five-five, one point oh seven four, the local, Texas local, Texas government code, section five-five, one point oh seven four, personnel matters. Let the record reflect, the city council adjourned at executive session to seven twelve PM. Let the record reflect, the city council reconvened an open session at seven forty-three PM. Item seven, discuss take action on, item G, evaluations of city secretary, chief of police, and city attorney. Let the record reflect, no action taken on that item. No further items on the agenda, I will declare the meeting adjourned.